Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 3rd, 2021 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight, Mr. LaLance, who is at home a little under the weather. So I hope he's feeling better. First item of business is to approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? And if not, we'll need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda with two items on it. Again, we don't need to read that, but it-
After the consent agenda, can we have just a minute before we take the next item?
Certainly. Yes, sir, Mr. Ives. Are there either of the items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion? And if not, we would be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as stated?
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we'll have a brief minute for Mr. Ives to check on something.
I want to go get some dinner.
I said, somebody needs to be telling jokes or something.
The alley will do it.
I was gonna say.
For sure.
I haven't had it in so long, I've got to close for lunch.
Every day?
Every day.
Are they related?
No, they're not.
Are you serious? Good thing I don't schedule you lunches there lately.
I didn't either.
I'm on a Chop House gig for my business lunches.
Oh, I love Chop House.
For lunch?
Not bad for lunch.
I didn't know that.
Wow.
I don't know until three now.
Did you see Primrose just gave up their brunch, too? Primrose.
The servers are excited about it.
Yeah.
My assistant and his girlfriend work there for service. She hates me.
Really? And people sit there for like hours. Yeah, I love Primrose.
I do, too. I've only had the brunch one time.
Something you want to share with the rest of the class? Come on up.
Do you want to hear a funny story? So, my wife, her wedding ring, somewhere. And I saw it, because I knew it was, I knew she was like, just kind of having pop, this one somewhere. So I picked it up and hid it.
Oh, good job.
Hold on, hold on, I'm waiting, it gets better.
He's taking you off mute, she needs to hear this.
No, I guess I should have, anyway. She comes to me about two weeks ago.
Yeah, my wife's going, this is really boring, isn't it? You sound like you killed you, dude.
No, because now I can't find it. Here we go.
And we're back.
She should kill you.
I think that was worse, kid. Nope. I'm an insurance agent for a living. I know all about scheduled property. Guess who didn't schedule a ring?
Nope. Psych.
Hey. You don't have any idea what you're doing.
Anybody tried a new restaurant lately?
Did you hear them saying?
Chop House or the alley?
I know the alley.
Chop House closed last night.
No, he's saying the alley's closed.
Yeah, the alley's closed last night.
Oh, no, the alley. So that's why we go to Chop House now.
Okay. That's true. Okay, so we will go ahead with the meeting. We do have one item of business before we get to the public hearings, but I'll go ahead and state that on the public hearings, we will be having the public hearings tonight. On five of the six public hearings, we will continue those public hearings and have them at our day meeting as well, due to notice requirements that were not timely met. And so, we'll, you know, certainly ask everybody to speak that's here tonight to speak at a public hearing. If for any reason it is not convenient for you to be here tonight to speak, you are certainly welcome to come on the, is it going to be the 17th? Is that what you said, ma'am?
That's correct, November 17th at 1:00 P.M.
November 17th, because we will again allow you to speak at that meeting. I would say you cannot speak at both, because it'll be a continuation. So if you did not get to speak today, you would be able to speak on the 17th. So for any of you that are here and think some of your neighbors did not get a notice, they have the opportunity to come speak at these public hearings on the 17th, and they will be heard. You would have to choose which public hearing you would like to speak at, either this one or the one on the 17th. So, we'll kind of review that again when we get to the public hearings, but I wanted you to know what our little break was about right there. So, we are going to continue now with our old business for this meeting, where we have one item, Slate Wood. The first item under this old business is a request for an exception to Section 5.7.3.1 of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be presenting this one. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Mr. John Trout has submitted a preliminary plat for a subdivision. That preliminary plat was considered at the October 20th Planning Commission meeting, at which time it was, action on the preliminary plat was deferred, because Mr. Trout wanted to request an exception to our subdivision regulations. And so we have two parts to the Slate Wood item on tonight's agenda. The first is the request that Mr. Trout has made for an exception to Section 5.7.3.1 of the subdivision regulations. And then, after you decide on that exception request, then you will, then you will consider the preliminary plat. But the exception request is critical to the layout of the preliminary plat, so we must take that first. If you'll recall, back at the, at the October 20th meeting, there was discussion about whether or not Mr. Trout's development, called Slate Wood, would make a street stub for future roadway connectivity to the property to the, to the west. And I have the property pulled up on our, on our screens, on our GIS system. Mr. Trout's property is, or the property that Mr. Trout has under contract are these two parcels here, 2921 Sulfur Springs Road, and this L-shaped property, which is to its south and to its west. Also, this lot in the Albany Court subdivision is where Mr. Trout would be connecting to sanitary sewer. So the property to the west is a, I think it's about a 25-acre parcel, 24.8 acres, owned by Murray and LaRoche. It's developed with a single-family home. There are currently two street stubs into it, one from Albany Court and one from Waterford Road in the Riverview subdivision. I will point out that Mr. David Ives, from our legal department, sent you all a memo with some, with some procedural instructions regarding the exception request to the subdivision regulations. If you didn't get a chance to read that via email today, I've laid out hard copies in front of you as well for your reference. The subdivision regulations, well, first of all, the specific clause in the subdivision regulations, which Mr. Trout is requesting an exception for, is Section 5.7.3.1, which is as follows. "The arrangement of public streets shall provide for the continuation between adjacent properties when such continuation is necessary for convenient movement of traffic, effective fire and police protection, efficient provisions of utilities and road maintenance. All streets shall be properly integrated with the existing and proposed system of streets and dedicated rights of way." The planning department has taken the position, ever since we've been meeting with Mr. Trout about this development and his design team, that there needed to be connectivity to the west, consistent with our subdivision regulations. We have communicated that, both verbally in our pre-application meeting and in writing. It's actually in the staff comments. That was, that was in the October 20th Planning Commission agenda. Mr. Trout indicated that he wished to, to make his case to the Planning Commission as to why he should be granted an exception to the subdivision regulations. The subdivision regulation lays out the following process by which an applicant can seek an exception. And I quote, "If the Planning Commission finds that extraordinary hardship or practical difficulty may result from strict compliance with these subdivision regulations, an exception variance from these subdivision regulations may be granted, provided such exception shall not be granted when it would have the effect of nullifying the general intent and purpose of these regulations, and provided further that the Planning Commission shall not permit exceptions unless it shall make findings based upon written evidence presented to it in each specific case that..." And so I won't, in order to save time, I won't read them twice, I'll read them as I go through. So in accordance with the procedure stated in the subdivision regulations, Mr. Trout has submitted a, a letter addressing each of the four standards that are in our subdivision regulations. So I'll go through those one by one, both Mr. Trout's response and staff's analysis of, of that standard. Standard A, "The conditions upon which the request for an exception is based are unique to the property for which the exception is sought and are not applicable generally to other property." The applicant states in his letter that a stub street is not warranted due to the relatively small number of lots in the subdivision. The proposed development Slate Wood is 12 acres and contains 26 lots, five of which would have frontage along Sulfur Springs Road. It is staff's opinion that this standard is not met as there appear to be no unique circumstances relative to the development tract, and that the number of lots by itself does not negate the requirement for connectivity between adjacent parcels. Standard B, "Because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship not self-imposed to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these subdivision regulations were carried out." In his letter, the applicant does not address the conditions of the property. Instead, he states that the neighboring property owner, Murray, to the west, has no intentions of developing his property, and that the stub will conflict with the location of their home. However, landowners' desire to use their property, including whether or not to sell it for development, changes over time. While Murray may not presently wish to sell his property for development, it is the responsibility of the city to plan for its eventual development, whether that occurs in two years, 10 years, or 25 years. Should Murray decide to sell for development, the location of the street stub in relation to the existing house will be a moot point. In addition, the applicant states that there are already three existing stubs into the Murray property, but staff counts two, Waterford and Albany, not three. It is staff's opinion that this standard has not been met, as it has not been demonstrated that the property contains particular physical surrounding shape or topographical features that would result in a particular hardship. Standard C, "The exception will not in any manner alter the intent of the major thoroughfare plan or the zoning ordinance." The applicant simply states in his letter that this request complies with, that his request complies with this standard, but he does not elaborate further. There does not appear to be any pertinent references to the issue at hand in the zoning ordinance. However, Section 3.1.5 roadway recommendations of the 2040 Major Transportation Plan states that enhanced roadway network connectivity is a central theme of, of that document. It states that "The connectivity of the different classified roadways is an effort to provide better distribution of traffic along all facilities. The overall goal is to provide a multitude of viable travel paths between differing but complementary land uses, such as areas of concentrated households and retail or employment centers. Enhanced roadway network connectivity provides the ability to more effectively distribute traffic over a variety of facilities, thus minimizing high concentrations of traffic on minimal roadways and associated intersections between land uses. Enhanced connectivity also aids in the reduction of travel time and distances between land uses." It goes on to state that "The goal of enhanced connectivity should be balanced against the quality of life issues that may be experienced when an unwarranted volume or particular type of traffic is redirected through residential or other incompatible land uses. The planned roadway improvement and construction projects depicted in the Major Transportation Plan demonstrate the plan's commitment to roadway connectivity and promoting alternative routes. Furthermore, in furtherance of the goals of the Major Transportation Plan, the city consistently seeks connectivity and multiple access points for development when possible, as it is recommending with the Slate Wood development. In looking at quality of life for the proposed development, it is staff's opinion that the connectivity will have no greater impact on the quality of life for Slate Wood than it has for any other residential development where such connectivity has been required. Furthermore, it is staff's opinion that the applicant has not demonstrated that this exception will not alter the intent of the Major Transportation Plan." Standard D, "An alternative providing equal or greater compliance is not available." The applicant indicates in his response that an alternative could be sought. However, he does not explore that further in his letter, as he states that the stub would diminish the overall quality of the subdivision. The quality of the subdivision is not one of the standards to be considered by the Planning Commission. It appears that there is flexibility with where the stub street could be located along the western property line. Alternatively, the development plan includes the construction of sanitary sewer on a vacant lot in the Albany Court subdivision. It appears that connecting to Albany Court via a new public street on this vacant lot may be a viable option. Regardless of the above, however, the applicant has not provided evidence that there are no alternatives. Therefore, it is staff's opinion that this standard has not been met. The subdivision regulations require that all of the above standards must be met in order for an exception to be granted. It is staff's opinion that the applicant has not met his burden of proof and demonstrated evidence that these standards have been met. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the request for an exception. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. David Ives is here, if you have any questions about procedural issues from a legal standpoint. And I believe Mr. Trout would like to say a few words as well.
Before we go any further, I'm abstaining from all discussions and the vote.
Okay. So I just want to, and I guess we'll ask the Planning Commission if they would like to allow Mr. Trout to come forward and speak. Any objection?
No objection to him speaking.
You can certainly, certainly come speak, Mr. Trout. You've heard the, the case.
Right. Thank you, Commission, thank you. My name's Jonathan Trout. I'm a proud member of Murfreesboro and appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. The city has made their stance clear. Goodness. So, I would like to say that my intention is, I'm, I'm a citizen of this city. My intention is to create what would be best for Murfreesboro. And so, in saying that, I think that I can lead a discussion, that, that we can agree that, that the statute, the design guidelines, the subdivision regulations are, they're not clear. Unfortunately, they have not established a number of lots that is necessary to have a stub street. I believe that the nicest subdivisions in our city are subdivisions that have privacy, and they do not have the ability for future traffic to come through in and out of those subdivisions. And that allows for a higher standard of living for those folks, places that they are proud to live. And that is what we're trying to create here. We're looking to create a really unique luxury community for the city of Murfreesboro. With regard to the subdivision regulations, the way that I see it, it does, there's no clear clarity as to that we do not meet the subdivision regulations. There is, it does state that if there was an existing stub, we would have to connect to it. And I don't deny that. If there was an existing stub, we wouldn't be here tonight. We would absolutely have to connect to it, but there's not. The design guidelines, and additionally, there are the, the two additional stubs that already connect to the neighboring property that will allow for great connectivity, should it ever be developed. I feel like those two stubs, along with the Sulfur Springs access, would create for, would allow for plenty of connectivity through that future development. The design guidelines, I've, I've blown up the picture. This is the example that is on the design guidelines for the city of Murfreesboro. This is the example. Within this example, there are no less than five cul-de-sac streets. So what I'm referring to is a single-entry street that leads to a cul-de-sac. So within that cul-de-sac street, there's no stub, there's no, there's one way in, one way out. And I've numbered them. This cul-de-sac in this example has 30 lots, 26 lots, 27 lots, 26 lots. All of, all of these cul-de-sacs have a greater number of lots than what we are seeking. I think there needs to be an established number. I believe that I can create and develop a higher-end product if we don't have to have a stub. I believe a stub raises questions. I believe it's a bit of an eyesore. And I think that in this particular situation, an exception is warranted, because we only have 21 impacted lots. And I don't believe that it's a safety issue. I don't believe that it's an emergency services issue or a utility issue to grant this exception and not require us to have a stub. If you all, I'll let the discussion, I don't know if I'm going to be allowed to get back up, but I guess, I, I think this should at least lead to the idea that the city staff should create a new ordinance that keeps this situation from happening in the future. This has taken a lot of our time, and I know everyone here, it's, it's going to be a long meeting. So I, I really believe that the, the ordinance could be clarified, and I'm hopeful that the Commission can see that this is an opportunity to create a really nice subdivision for our city without a stub. Thank you so much, and I'll, I'll sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. I, I think what we have here, according to all the discussions I've heard, all the meetings we've had, trying to interpret all of this, there is no way that we can sit here and look at the strict interpretation of these guidelines and say that we have a plat here that we could approve. I think what has happened, and it's, I guess, just the first time that we have been pushed to the point to actually be asked to approve something that did not have the stubs. I think normally, there's a lot of discussion about the stubs during our meetings, when we're looking at potential future subdivisions, and a lot of discussion about whether there's one, two, or three stubs. We're looking at a big piece of property or a small piece of property. But in this case, we've been given a plat that we cannot approve according to the subdivision restrictions that are currently in place. And I think unless you want to withdraw your application and wait for the city to rewrite an ordinance, which I have no idea whether even they'll rewrite an ordinance, they may or may not decide that they want to pick, pick a number, to say 10 lots, 15 lots, 20 lots. I, I don't, I don't know that we, you know, I'm not sure I'd be in favor of setting in stone what the number of lots is. I think there's a whole lot more that goes into it than just the number of lots. So I'm, I'm just disappointed at this point that we are even in this situation. I'm disappointed that we are sitting here with a plat that evidently, according to our ordinances, that we cannot approve, I don't think, according to what Mr. Blomley just read to us. And so, I guess we could sit here and discuss it all night long, but I don't think we can approve the plat that we've been given to approve. So I, I don't know what we do about, number one, we have a discussion and vote on a request for an exception, but we have been told by staff, and I guess legal, Mr. Ives, that we, we don't, we don't have the authority to approve this. So it is really, I don't think, up for a lot of discussion. It's been my, my understanding.
Madam Chair, if I may?
You may.
The, the authority to approve it would require findings that the elements that have set forth have, have been met. So if in fact, there was a 50-foot drop-off on one edge of the property, a finding that the property does not lend itself to a, a stub street might make sense. So, but it's the conditions of the property that need to be looked at, and it's akin to other variance of rules and variance proceedings, that it's the property that, if, if a property simply does not lend itself- simply does not lend itself to satisfying our regulations, then there is, there may be grounds for a, a variance to allow something other than what's normally required. So to say you can't approve it, I think it would be a bit of an overstatement, but it, I think an approval would have to be based on findings that, in fact, the property itself, there's a situat, condition of the property that, that makes it virtually impossible to comply with our regulations. And if that were the case, then his request could be approved. I don't see that with the property, and I don't think planning staff.
That's what I'm saying. We're sitting here with four pages of something that's telling us why this property does not comply.
Yes.
So therefore, this plat tonight, I don't think can be approved.
Madam Chair, I would, I would interject. As far as the, as far as the plat, if you were to deny the, the exception, the plat could still be approved with the staff comment, you know, conditioned on the staff comment that they provide connectivity to the, to the west via a street stub. So the plat could still be approved, can, conditioned, with, with the proper conditions in place.
And did it say that it had, if there's a stub street, it had to be to the west, or just that there had to be a stub street?
We, we, really, the, the stub street, the only way it can go is to the west. There could be a connection to the existing street, to Albany Court. We think that's something that we, we think could happen. However, that's not something that Mr. Trout and, and, and his design team have put forth as a, as an alternative to us. I think that we are, we're willing to explore that, that possibility, but our, our first, our first request and the staff comments, what we have conveyed to Mr. Trout has been the, the, the stub to the west. So we're open to exploring the, the connection to Albany Court, but we just, that's just something that hasn't been presented to us by the design team. And I don't know if that's something that, in the event that the exception was denied, I don't know if Mr. Trout has a preference one way or the other, if he stubs to Albany Court, or, I mean, if he connects to Albany Court, or if he stubs to the west.
Other comments from the Planning Commission?
So I just, I want to, you know, my years on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we, we deal with variances all the time. So my question to the staff is, the applicant in this case would not be, if he doesn't meet all four, or any of one of the four conditions, then the application would be denied. Is that a correct statement?
That's my understanding, and Mr. Ives can.
All four or one of them?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
It, I believe that the, the way this is written, it requires all four.
Okay. Yeah, I, Mr. Trout, I am probably not supposed to speak to anyone in the crowd, but I, I don't think that, that there's any.
Developer.
Yeah, the developer, okay. I, I don't, I don't think there's any way that we can get past number one, based upon the way this regulation is worded. There may be some, number three, I think one might could argue, but number one, I, I don't know that we can get past that with respect to, if we were to try to grant this exception. So I, I'm, I'm not in a position to be able to grant it.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission?
I'll just say, Mr. Trout, I.
You asked, you asked him a question, did he want to withdraw?
What are his, his options at this point?
His, his request for the site plan approval could be withdrawn, right, Matthew, if he wants to withdraw that?
I think, I think if he, if the exception is denied, then he could, he could withdraw his, his request for a, for preliminary plat approval. You could approve the preliminary plat approval, subject to staff comments, and that's, the staff comments would include providing connectivity to the west via a street stub, and that, and that's something that I think, I think staff would be very capable of, of, of carrying out that condition after the Planning Commission meeting. I think the way that state law is written is that, is that the preliminary plat, unless he were to withdraw it, you, you have to take action on it tonight. I think it's either 60 or 65 days, Mr. Ives, by which if you don't take action, it's automatically approved. And so I think that, that, that would expire before we get to the next Planning Commission meeting.
I don't remember the exact days, but I agree, it would, it would be automatically approved if there's no action taken tonight and if he doesn't withdraw it. And I don't believe that would be a good result.
Say that again? It would be automatic.
Planning, Planning Commission is required to act on a preliminary plat within a certain period of time. And if they don't act within that period of time, and if the applicant doesn't withdraw, then it's automatically under state law approved. We certainly don't recommend that that be the course of action. So again, unless Mr. Trout wants to withdraw his plat, his preliminary plat, then Planning Commission needs to take action on it. And it, and let me add, either withdraw or request a deferral. If he requests a deferral, it can be deferred till another, to another meeting, if that would have any merit to it. But either to withdraw or request a deferral. And if.
So I, I think we are, it sounds like the request for the exception is not going to be granted. So item one, when we have on motion in here, is this a motion on item A, or are we making a motion on item A1, and then another motion on item A2?
There, there would need to be one motion on the, on the exception request, and then one motion on the preliminary plat. And the motion on the exception request should reference whether or not he has met the four standards or not. Mr. Ives, can you, can you help them with that?
I believe that if the Commission is, desires to approve the request, you would have to, whether it's combined in one motion or four separate ones, you would have to find that he's met all four of the elements. If that is not the result that the Commission is looking for, I think a motion to deny, based on the fact that the applicant has not met the conditions stated in the subregs, would be sufficient. One motion to deny would be sufficient.
Okay. I think we can vote on item one. If we have a motion on item one.
Can I ask a question, procedurally? Does this give the applicant the opportunity, if, if we deny it now, can the applicant then decide to do the stub road without having to start over? Should we give the applicant the option?
That'll be what we'll be able to do in our number two.
Okay.
We, if we were to approve, subject to staff comments, the, the staff comment does require the stub.
Okay.
Is what I believe I understand correctly?
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request for the exception, based upon the fact that I don't feel like that the applicant has shown that he meets the requirements set in these regulations for an exception.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I mean, we're going to have the second.
I was going to say, okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Abstain.
Did we have some ayes down here? Okay, so, and one abstention. Okay, so the request for the exemption is denied. So now we have item two, which is the preliminary plat for 26 lots on 12 acres, zoned RS-15, located along Sulfur Springs Road, KBT Land Developer. So this is the plat that we are being asked to approve, which, if we approve it, subject to staff comments, staff comment, I believe from the Engineering Department, does state that they would require a stub street. I don't know if they referenced the west side, or if they just said they required a stub street. Read that to us.
The, the comment says, as, this is staff comment number one for Engineering, it says, as discussed, discussed in the pre-application meeting, provide a stub road to adjacent property on the west side of the development, as required by city guidelines and standards. So the plat, the preliminary plat is, is generally in good order, with the exception of, of the requested stub road. And so we would ask that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments, including providing the stub road to the, to the west, to the Murray La Roche property. Also, planning staff comment number four, provide approval of the location of the, the centralized mail service from the postal service. We do not have that approval yet. Mr. Trout is working on, on securing that from the USPS. Will want to make sure that the post office has approved their mail delivery. They've got three separate kiosks scattered throughout the development. City staff is, is good with the locations that they have proposed, but we just need to, him to provide the approval from the post office. And also, during the, during the day meeting on the 20th, it was referenced that some of the lots were, were relatively shallow, and we wanted Mr. Trout to provide confirmation that, that all of the building envelopes were sufficient for the, for the size homes that he was planning on constructing on these lots. He has provided us a letter stating that he has reviewed the building envelopes, and that they all, they all, they're all practical for his purposes for building homes, and that he understands that he won't, that no variances will be granted, setback variances, that is, because any hardships would be self-created. So we would recommend that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments, including providing the street stub to the west. And as I mentioned, staff will be happy to implement that condition post Planning Commission.
So that is our, opportunity for a motion would be, subject to those staff comments that Mr. Blomley just mentioned, or, yeah, I guess I would ask Mr. Trout if there's any chance, did you want to withdraw, or for us to make an approval, subject to what you've just heard, would that be the best for you moving forward?
We would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Any other comments?
I'll make the motion, but I do, I would like to make a comment. So you also said that the stub road to, you were still open to the stub road going to Albany Court? Now, so if we approve it, subject to staff comments, are you saying you're still open to that, or is that going to be closed, or it requires an amendment?
Well, I think that, that, that's not something that, that the design team has put forward as, as an option. We feel that that's a potential option. We haven't explored that with the, with the design team, and they haven't expressed a preference for that. So I think, as it stands right now, our, our condition is to provide a, a stub to the undeveloped property to the west. I think our, a second option, our preference is to the undeveloped property to the west. A secondary option would possibly be to Albany Court, but that's just something that we really haven't had an opportunity to explore with the design team, as it's not something that they've mentioned that they're desirous of doing.
Okay. So I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Abstain.
One abstention. All right. Motion passes. All right, moving on to our public hearings. I believe, as we said, we have six tonight, and just as a reminder, you can speak here tonight at these public hearings. If for any reason you choose not to speak tonight, you may speak at the day meeting on the 17th.
Madam Chair, I would interject. This first public hearing, there, has different notice requirements than the, than the next five, so Planning Commission can vote on, on this first public hearing.
First item, so the next five, first one we can vote on, next five will continue. So the first item is a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment, to consider abandonment, abandonment of the right-of-way of Robert Rose Drive. Matt Taylor is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matt Taylor is here this evening, representing his client, the, the development company, Heinz Company, who are developing Clary Park. During the zoning process for that property, staff noticed that there was a small, very small segment of right-of-way that currently exists, that due to the new master plan and layout, would no longer be needed. And so during the zoning process, we put the applicants on notice, that we would like for them to make a request to abandoning the very small portion of right-of-way. So what you have before you tonight is that request. The property itself is about .07 acres. It's the small orange area on the map that you have, hopefully on, on your screen right now. You can see that it lines up with Gravett Street across Robert Rose Drive. It was initially anticipated to be a future connection from Robert Rose Drive to Medical Center Parkway. That connection is not a part of the plan, the plans that we've approved, and so it's no longer needed. And so the next image that I have is the orthophoto that shows the property as it exists today. You can see the Henley Station slash Lifestyle Development across the street, and this very small segment of Robert Rose Drive right-of-way. Although it may not be required per Tennessee code, the city of Murfreesboro has opted to conduct public hearings on matters of right-of-way abandonment, not necessarily the mandatory referral action, because we would value the opportunity for folks to come to tell us if they have any interest in the right-of-way for this property. We suspected, and I think you'll probably find out, that there's no one relying on this right-of-way, so it's not necessary for the city to maintain. However, I did do some research into the property and did find that there are some utilities in this easement, in this right-of-way. So when you abandonment, we'll ask for utilities to be dedicated, so that the various infrastructure and utility companies in there can maintain what they have in that portion of right-of-way. So staff, as a request, is that you consider this item, and you make a recommendation to city council. It's our recommendation that it be approved, subject to staff comments, and there are three staff comments we'd like for it to be subject to. First of all, the, the applicant providing the city legal department any necessary documents to prepare a quitclaim deed, and for recording the quitclaim deed. The second one is a plat depicting the abandonment and relocation of the subject property must be recorded. And the third is that a utility easement must be dedicated, as needed, to accommodate any existing drainage and utilities. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them, either before or after your public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to city council regarding this matter.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green? Thank you, Ms. Green. All right. For our public hearings tonight, we will ask anyone to come forward that would like to speak. You will come to the podium, state your name and address. You will make comments, you have up to three minutes to make all your comments, and please make all your comments directly to the Planning Commission, and not to any other members of the audience, or developers, or, or anyone else. Comments to us, any questions that you have. We'll make note of all the questions, and try to answer any questions at the end of each public hearing. So first public hearing, item A, that we just discussed, is now open. If anybody would like to split, to speak on this item, please come forward. So we will close the public hearing, and ask the Planning Commission if they have any questions or comments, and if not, we'll be ready for a motion.
There are no questions. I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Greg, you have a voicemail.
Item B. We have an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately nineteen acres located along Florence Road. Sharon Annett, Cynthia Williams, and Deborah Cohen are the applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you again. This next public hearing is for you to consider the adoption of a plan of services and acceptance of an annexation petition, that's been submitted to the Planning Department for property located along Florence Road. I have a map available that shows the property requesting to be annexed in an orange color, and you can see that it's the larger, almost rectangular shape. That property is owned by Sharon Annett, Cynthia Williams, and Deborah Cohen, and they have signed and submitted to the city a petition requesting annexation of their property. We do require that property owners request the annexation, and we have received that information from them. The next agenda item will be to discuss zoning changes for this property. This agenda is just to consider annexation of the property, so taking it from the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and bringing it into Murfreesboro city limits. The area in orange is approximately sixteen point seven acres in size. Staff also included two segments of right-of-way, one which is fairly difficult to see, and you know how I love the telestrator, so I'm going to go ahead and circle here. There is a ten-foot wide segment of right-of-way that runs from the southern portion of the property to this area. And that right-of-way was dedicated sometime after the property adjacent to it was annexed, so we're requesting for that to be included in the annexation study, and a second segment, which is the pink area to the south. And that segment of right-of-way is approximately twelve hundred linear feet, so in total, we have a seven hundred and fifty linear foot, and a twelve hundred and fifty linear foot segment of right-of-way, which are included in the study for annexation. The, I have gotten a few calls about the property, mostly people questioning whether their property is included in the annexation. And our interpretation of current state law is that we cannot annex property without the written consent of the property owner, so the annexation of this property only includes the folks who have requested the annexation, and right-of-way, which did have to have consideration of the Rutherford County Road Board. Previously, we also had a policy where the city would not intentionally completely surround an unincorporated area of Rutherford County. We called them donuts in the past, I think it was an easy way to remember, and so some astute property owners who live in the area called me to ask if they, if we annex this right-of-way, will end up completely encompassing them, and does that mean they're annexed? And the answer to that question is no, based on our current interpretation of Tennessee Code annotated. So, with that information, there, as I mentioned, the property owners do have a contract to sell the property, and the next agenda item, which is the rezoning, will be to consider that, and that's for Alcorn Properties, but the current property owners are asking for the city to annex the property. I prepared a plan of services and feasibility study, included it in your packet, and it has information regarding what services the city can provide, and gives you a timeframe for when we can provide them. Essentially, most city services will be available immediately upon the effective date of annexation. In its current state, there's one single-family house on the property, and it'll be a relatively easy annexation. With development, we projected what that impact would be to the city, and we believe that it's also, if developed as proposed, within the city's ability to provide all services within a timely manner. The property is located in the urban growth boundary. It is contiguous with the city limits, and as I mentioned, we believe we can provide services. City sewer is on the property, although the house currently does not have access to the sewer. If it is annexed, then they will have a right to connect to that sewer if they desire. I'll talk about it again in the next agenda item, but there is a significant portion of the city's major transportation plan that impacts this property. The map on the screen shows STI eight. It's a blue line that runs kind of across the property there, and that is a future five-lane road that will go through the property, and so the entity who has a contract to purchase the property is aware of that improvement, but I did want to point it out at this stage that that is something that's on our major transportation plan, and we are planning for that element. Talk more about it in the zoning process. Any questions for me? I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. As I mentioned, the plan of services is included in your packet, and if you have any questions about those, I'll be glad to answer them as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green, before we open the public hearing on this annexation petition? And plan of services? Okay?
Thank you.
All right. We will open the public hearing, and this is just in regards to the annexation petition and plan of services for the nineteen acres along Florence Road. So, anyone that would like to speak on this public hearing, please come forward.
My name is Rachel Harris, and I live on three-five-two-two Crepe Circle, and my comments tonight are in regards to this piece of property, so both the annexation and the zoning for 2021-512 and 2021-423. And so, I'm just a resident who lives right near that piece of property, and so I'm just not in favor of the property being zoned Commercial Fringe District or RS six, RS fifteen, or something else, I think would be more favorable for the residents, or neighbors. And my questions are if there's going to be any kind of environmental impact study, or any attempts to develop in a sustainable manner, this piece of property, and I am concerned about it being annexed into the city limits. Mostly, there's a lot of land there, there's a lot of animals, so I am worried about the increasing lack of green space for our wildlife in the city. And I'm also curious about checks and balances for the developer, developing this piece of property. Thank you for your time and consideration for this piece of property. I don't know if there's anything that can be said or done, for something else to be done with this piece of property, if it has to be a development, but that, those are my concerns. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, so at this point, we will continue. We will not close. We will continue this public hearing on Wednesday, November seventeenth. Anything else we need to do in regards to that?
I think a motion to do so would probably be in order. Mr. Ives, would you agree with that?
I agree, yes, it would be.
Motion to defer to the seventeenth.
To continue.
To continue.
Continue the public hearing?
Sorry. What he said.
Second. What he said.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And just to be sure, so we won't even do discussion on any of this tonight, because we would need discussion after we've heard from everybody that might want to speak.
I think that would be more appropriate, yes. If someone has a specific, or if you have an answer to the question.
Yeah, so I was concerned about Ms. Harris's questions, and whether we need to address any of those tonight, or just know that someone will be in contact with her to discuss them if we don't see her on the seventeenth. How do y'all want to handle that for all of these that we're getting ready to have?
Keep it on the record?
Mr. Ives, would it be appropriate to answer questions?
I think it'd be appropriate to, it would probably be appropriate to do it either way, but with the speaker here in the audience, if there is, if we, if staff or the Planning Commission do have answers to the question she raised, I think it'd be appropriate to go ahead and do that tonight. And then, if additional questions are raised in two weeks, we'll answer those at that time, or at least attempt to.
So, I wrote down environmental impact. Would there be a study regarding that? Anything regarding sustainability, lack of green space, check and balances for the developer?
Sure. As I mentioned, there are two public hearings for the property, and I think that the resident who spoke probably had some comments that are more relevant to the next public hearing, which is the zoning of the property. She mentioned, she commented on the proposed zoning districts for the property, so that may be an appropriate time for that. So, as far as the city's subdivision regulations and design standards, we do require that stormwater, rainwater be managed, the quality of it and the quantity of it. So, what goes back to our rivers, and just to the east of this property, there is a significant watershed, has to be designed and managed. Sustainability, of course, is a term that's been fairly popular for, I think, the past twenty years, and so it essentially is development that the next generations, the impacts are felt less. I think it's probably more subjective on what you believe is sustainable development, but one thing to really be aware of, is this property will have a five-lane road going through it. And five lanes is no small street, it's not a typical two-lane subdivision street, or a three-lane collector, but there's a five-lane road that will be going through the middle of this property. And so, currently in the county, it could develop with fifteen thousand square foot lots, or twenty thousand square foot lots, depending on how the sewer is managed. The city, of course, has sanitary sewer, which I personally and professionally believe is a cleaner way to manage human waste, as opposed to septic tanks, and of course, in the county, they would have a right to use septic tanks or step fields. But, saying, does this property have to develop? I think that the owners have a right to develop it, in a way already, and the city has plans for a five-lane major arterial to go through the property. And it, of course, will have a bridge approach, which is something pretty significant to the property. You know, nothing has to happen, but those are the planning documents that our community's adopted, and it's what we use for preparing for the future of our community. Let's see, did you have another, anything else?
Checks and balances for the developer, and I'm not sure exactly what, whether just, I guess, your inspections along the way, and to make sure they're, I guess that's really the question.
Sure. Sometimes checks and balances refers to our legal system, which isn't as directly proportional to this property, but we do require planning documents. Some may argue we will require too many plans to be prepared, but we believe that that results in a higher quality of life for Murfreesboro residents. And so, we require planning documents, they come to you. I think the first item on the agenda tonight was an example of a subdivision, where you spend quite a bit of time considering those, and ensuring that we are meeting the expectation of our community, and we are creating that higher quality of life that we do see in Murfreesboro. We have inspectors through the process of the road construction, because as you know, developers build the roads, and the city accepts them, and manages and maintains them in perpetuity. And then, of course, we have permits, where people, when they build individual homes, if that's what she's talking about, we of course have an established permitting process, an inspection process that is consistent with what the state of Tennessee allows us to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Green. We had a motion to...
Continue.
Continue. Did we have a second?
Second.
Second. And since I don't have my normal little checklist here, that I could mark off that we voted, and we can move on? Let's vote on that again, and just say, we're going to continue that on November seventeenth. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. So, I can check that off. So, we will move on to item C, which is the zoning application for approximately sixteen point seven acres to be zoned RS six, and approximately two point one acres to be zoned CF, Commercial Fringe, simultaneous with annexation, located along Florence Road. Alcorn Properties, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. This third public hearing this evening is for you to consider a companion zoning change request for the annexation and plan of services you just considered as item B. So, this item C is a request from Alcorn Properties, Inc., who have a contract to purchase the property, from the three property owners we just mentioned in the annexation. The property itself is sixteen point seven acres in total, but you can see the map that I'm sharing with you has two colors on the property. That's because they're proposing to zone the property two different zone districts. The orange color, closest to Florence Road, is proposed to be Commercial Fringe, CF District, and the area shaded yellow is proposed to be RS six district, which is single-family residential district, with a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. The subject property, of course, is located along the east side of Florence Road, just south of the Florence Street subdivision, and north of Cherrywood Estates. The property has one single-family house on it, located within the orange portion of this map, and it's zoned RM in the county, which is medium-density residential. The surrounding properties are mostly developed, single-family subdivisions. I think notable exceptions to that are what's across Florence Road. What's across Florence Road currently is mostly undeveloped, however, there's zoning that is for townhomes, which is that RSA type two. For small lot subdivisions, the PRD, there's Commercial Fringe District, which is the CF on the map, and there's RS six, Single Family Residential District. Beyond this properties, or beyond the borders of this map, to the west are more properties that are zoned Commercial Highway District, that are adjacent to the interstate. So, what you see on the east side of Florence Road is mostly developed, single-family subdivisions, and across Florence Road, although not developed today, is zoned for more intense-type zoning, such as commercial and townhomes. The CF portion of the property could result in approximately two commercial lots, and that would be at the intersection of Florence Road and the new five-lane road, which I mentioned would be going through this property. And so, since it, we, the developer and staff agree that the Commercial Fringe District could serve as a neighborhood commercial node that transitions into the heavier intensity to the west, the RS six development could result in approximately fifty-one single-family detached lots. And so, fifty-one single-family detached lots, and two Commercial Fringe lots. There's an existing single-family house, as I mentioned, in the commercial portion of the development. That home would become a non-conforming use, and a non-conforming structure, and any future developments would, the city's expectation would be that that house be removed, and could not be converted or used for a commercial business, that single-family home being used for a commercial business. Mr. Alcorn has indicated that it's not their desire to reuse that. However, the home can continue to be occupied as a single-family home unless development plans come and change, in which case they'll have to cease that. The Future Land Use Map does recommend that this area develop with larger lots, so ten thousand, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand square foot lots. However, staff believes that the impacts of the Future Transportation Plan warrant a closer look at that map. The Future Land Use Map that we have today was prepared prior to our Future Transportation Plan, and as I mentioned, there is a five-lane road that's proposed to go through this development. As a part of the development, the developer is proposing to dedicate the required right-of-way for five lanes, and construct three of those five lanes with the development. So, we believe that there's a, moving a city interest forward with the development of this property, and the fact that the city is getting that right-of-way dedicated, rather than going out and purchasing it from the property, and there are some of the infrastructure is going to be constructed with this development. The additional two lanes are anticipated to be added by the city at a future stage, when we see the rest of the road being constructed. So, this property, as I mentioned, I've got an exhibit showing the proposed potential layout, and I mentioned that RS six is not consistent with the Future Land Use Map, however, we believe it is an appropriate zone for this property for a couple of reasons. The impact of that five-lane road going right through the middle of the property really kind of changes how it can develop. You may, though, have heard planners in the past come to you and recommend against RS six, because we would not want to put a bunch of driveways on a five-lane road, that would really do the opposite of what we want with this road. We'd like to be able to move traffic with five lanes. So, what's different about this property, and maybe another one that might be requesting RS six, is that the city is actually going to enter into a contract with the developer, Mr. David Alcorn, who is here. And in that contract, it's, one of the stipulations is going to be that these are alley-loaded homes, meaning the driveways are not going to be going right on that future five-lane road. And so, having the alleys is really essential in managing the streetscape for small lots. I know we've had discussions in the past, and will continue to have discussions about the impacts of parking on small lots, and delivery of services in small lots, but one of the best ways to be able to manage that is to have alley-loaded, people say products, I prefer to say homes or lots. And so, the contract that the city council will enter into with the developer will be that that right-of-way is dedicated, that there's a portion of the infrastructure constructed, and that we're not going to have fifty-one driveways clogging up our future road, which we think is important to our community. So, with those happening, or those being a part of this application, staff supports deviation from the Future Land Use Map. For one, it didn't consider the impacts of the road that will go through the property, because it was prepared prior to the transportation plan. Another one is because of the contract ensures that we won't have those driveways there. And it does make sense that if this road were not going through the property, that probably... probably staff would have recommended a 10,000-square-foot lot, homes here are 12 or larger. But with the impact of that road, it really changes what happens here. So we, the developer is here this evening, and if you have any questions from him, he'll be glad, of course, to answer them. I think we'll ask for him to come back. We believe that the Commercial Fringe portion does provide a neighborhood service for the future residents here and that the benefits for this development are important enough that you should recommend approval of the RS6 and the CF to city council at your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions for Ms. Green before we open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will open the public hearing on the zoning application for this property and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the zoning of the property. Anybody else? Okay.
No one else is going to ask about it. I guess I will.
Okay.
My name's Kirk Brock. I live at 107 O'Shea Court. I own property on Chippendale, and my property is up against this, what's looking to be RS6 zone. My question is, what is the impact going to be of everyone's property around it? Are the lines going to stay the same? Are they going to request a variance of six feet? You know, what's it going to look like? I don't think, with the road being added, I don't think it'd be a big deal, but when you add that five lane through the middle of it, from one side of that property to the other, I can throw a rock across that field. It's not that wide. And that would be my question, is what's the impact to the property around it?
So like, is the, are the setback lines or anything on your property going to be affected? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking. You know, what, where the current property lines are, is that, are they going to request that six-foot? This has happened before, and it cost me a lot of money. And this is not a big deal because it's not a big piece of property, but it does, you know, make a small piece of property smaller.
Okay.
When you do that. That's my question.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mr. Alcorn?
Planning staff, thank you. My name's David Alcorn. I am the developer on this property. As Ms. Margaret Ann has mentioned, it is a difficult piece of property because of the five lane that will go through the middle of it. Understanding that, we, there's 49 residential lots, and we are entering into an agreement with that RS6 that will also protect some of the things that RS6 does not, such as the alley load, nothing on the new road. Each house will have a minimum square footage that we'll implement in that agreement. They'll all be two-car garage. They'll all be of a stone brick or cement siding exterior. So it's going to flow very well and even in upgrade from some of the area around. Most of the adjoining property to the residential side is, as you see on the map, RS10. This is RS6, but it also has some common area, which RS10 does not. And a lot of that common area does back up to some of those, as you can see the design, some of the adjoining properties. The Commercial Fringe lines up with the Commercial Fringe kind of across the street, and of course, across the street, as Ms. Green mentioned, was there's RS6 and also PRD. But these are single-family homes, and they will have, with the RS6, they'll have the 35-foot setback on the garage side and the regular setbacks. No requests for variances on any of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alcorn. Anyone else like to speak tonight on this item? Does anybody, we're not going to close it. We're going to continue it, but we'll make a motion to do that in a minute, but I think we'll address any questions from Mr. Rock and, or Mr. Alcorn has certainly addressed some of those.
Sure.
Anything else you heard?
I wanted to make clear with the rezoning or development of this property that it would only be for the property boundaries here. This doesn't include the dedication and any additional right-of-way from any other property owners. I think one of the questions was, would there be movement of a property line or setback lines on properties that are not a part of the 16.7 acres? And there wouldn't be. If there were going to be any changes to property lines, that property owner would have to agree to do something like that. But we, I don't even think there's any reason to do that in addition to the fact that it would require their consent. So there, I don't anticipate any movement of someone else's property lines based on development of this property or the dedication of the right-of-way within this property. Obviously, the road that extends to the east and west, we'll have to work with those property owners about the right-of-way when the time comes, but it's separate from this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green.
I've got a curiosity question. So when we say a third, or Mr. Alcorn mentioned a 35-foot setback, is that setback from the alleyway or from the property line in question?
Sure. So the RS6 district has setbacks that say, "A garage attached to a single-family dwelling shall have a minimum front setback of 35 feet. The remaining portion of the structure can be 25 feet." So the 35 feet is so you can get four cars parked in the driveway. And so if they're, if, with the front of these houses facing the road, they, the houses can be 25 feet from the road because there's no garage between them and the road. However, the driveway will be required to accommodate four parking spaces.
So 35 feet?
Right.
Okay. To the alley?
From the alley.
Yeah, from the alley.
Or from the property line? Is that your question?
Yeah, that's my question.
Okay.
So it's, sometimes property lines go to the center line of an alley.
I'm with you.
And sometimes they go maybe to the curb or some other area. The alley is sometimes common area, a part of a lot, and sometimes the alley is a separate kind of common space, property line. We still require that the cars be able to park there and that they can't, that they still have to meet their minimum parking standards.
I think it's a valid question, though. With that five-lane road, how close are these townhomes going to be to the property line? But we don't know the answer to that.
So they're single-family detached houses. They're not townhomes.
Oh, they are, single-family.
Right. So they're single-family homes, but they're alley-loaded, single-family homes. The houses will be up to 20 feet, 25 feet from the right-of-way line of the new road, but there will be no garages on that side. They'll all be in the back. The driveway in the back will have to be able to accommodate the cars, the minimum parking standard for the RS6 district.
Which side's the front?
So the front is parallel to a public right-of-way. The front is what faces the new road. That's technically the front lot line according to the zoning ordinance.
Or it's going to be...
25 foot off.
Right. It'll be 25 feet off the five-lane road.
Right, because that's the front.
But I think Commissioner Halliburton's question was, how far from the back of the house or the garage to the property line are we looking at?
Right, but I think she, you're saying 35 feet, but that could include part of the alleyway, is what you're saying.
So I'm saying the distance of the driveway will have to be enough for two cars in each, or four cars total, because it's not technically a front at that point, but it's where the garage is.
Right.
We require each of these single-family detached lots to be able to meet a minimum parking exclusive of the garage, and then there's some changes that we've made to the ordinance regarding garage parking somewhat recently.
So let me ask it a different way. So how long's the driveway got to be?
35 feet.
Thank you. That's what I want to know. All right.
Mr. Halliburton, regardless of the length of the driveway, they will have to demonstrate prior to the issuance of a building permit that they meet our parking requirements for each of those homes.
Yeah, I was more worried about the rear property line and how the subdivision would impact the neighbors that are adjacent to this development and the fact that the alleyway would be right next to their property line.
My concern as well.
That's, that's, that was the purpose of my question, which I'm fine with it because not only do you have the alleyway, but now you've got another 35 feet that you've distanced the garage from the property, the adjacent property owner, which is a long way.
Yeah, my concern wasn't as much, I understand that. My concern was safety on the other side. If the houses are fronting a five-lane road, now you're 25 feet from that five-lane road, and you can have kids playing in the front versus the back, and that's, that's the only thing I was, are there any precautions that we're putting in place?
The five-lane road will have, obviously, street trees, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and we find that there's not as much, they'll have porches as well that can protrude in that setback. We find that the courtyards created in these homes tend to be used more than the front yards, so there can be options where you do detached garages, obviously, but the creating the space in the back for alley-loaded homes tends to be where more time is spent in the common area. The common area is very important to developments with these small lots, and so they have a pond, but they also have some areas that are play areas that are on the backside, and I guess this is one of those areas. Now, this, I generally don't show with bulk zoning, and this is a bulk zoning request, exhibits from the developers showing proposed development, because if it's not a planned development, you know, this is just one idea of what you can do, and they're not held to it, so I don't like to give the perception to people who are interested in the project or are playing commission that this is what the development's going to look like. With this one being a little different than a traditional RS6, because there is going to be that agreement that Mr. Huddleston's working with the developer on, there's more, more certainty as to what it will likely look like. Mr. Alcorn will, is proposing to develop the property. I don't know if he'll build the homes, but that contract will hold everybody to that same standard. So ordinarily, I wouldn't provide you this exhibit under RS6 because it may or may not be what's there, and, you know, we like to show you what's going to happen, what might not happen. But with this one, I think that you can have a little bit more certainty that it is more like the layout that you'll see. It'll come before you again, of course. The development plans will become before this body if it's approved.
Any other questions? And if not, we are looking for a motion to continue this public hearing on November 17th.
I'm with the way continuing the public hearing, November 17th.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
See you in a few weeks.
All right. Item D is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 25 acres located along New Salem Highway. Salem Properties, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for allowing the public here tonight to provide their comments. I believe a lot of them that are here are for this item and the next agenda item. This one before you tonight is a request for annexation and a plan of services for approximately 25 acres located along New Salem Highway. The property owner is Salem Properties, currently represented by Matt Taylor from SCC, who's here this evening. It is located at 6015 New Salem Highway. There is a single-family residence and some accessory structures that are on this property. The property is located along the east side of New Salem Highway. Let me get to a map. And north of Clear Ridge Drive, as you can see on the exhibit depicted on the computer. The study area is located within the city of Murphy'sboro urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limits along the west, north, and east property lines. Simultaneous with the annexation request has been a zoning application submitted requesting for bulk zoning on the property. They're asking for CH along the frontage, along New Salem Highway, and then RS8 along the rear portion. Looks like we still didn't fix our exhibit. So it was originally requested for RS6, but it's been notified, and the staff report does reflect the RS8 zoning request. Staff has prepared a plan of services that is part of your staff report packet, and it did study what the property would affect any city services if it's annexed in its current condition, which is with the one single-family residence. It should be noted that Murphy'sboro Fire and Rescue Department can only provide limited fire services in its current condition to that house, and that's due to access and fire hydrant issues they would not be able to provide there. So they would be able to provide services to the property, but not to the residence structure itself. However, when future development does occur on this property, the access and fire flow limitations referenced would be so that it meets the ISO Classification 1, that fire protection can be provided. In the plan of services, it did study all the different areas that we are required to in the plan of services, and the city can provide those immediately upon annexation. We also studied it for future development, and services can also be provided in the future. One question that comes up often is the sewer, and there is sewer out to this area, to this property, and it's located within an existing sewer assessment district. So any development on this property would participate in that district and provide funds towards that district to help offset any costs for already having that sewer extension out there. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as Mr. Taylor here. The next item on the agenda will be for the zoning, which discusses any potential for development, and this item is just for the annexation itself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rush. Any questions for Ms. Rush before we open the public hearing?
Just to clarify, you said we could not provide fire services at this time?
Not to the structure, the single-family structure, but they can provide emergency services to the property. So if there was someone to have a heart attack or any kind of medical needs, they could do that. But there, it's approximately a half-mile driveway, and that distance is just too far for the truck to go down.
Understood.
Mr. Wright, I would just supplement what Ms. Rush just said. It's not that we couldn't provide fire protection or emergency response service. It's just that our, to that existing home, our response would be limited and would not necessarily be the standard ISO Class 1 protection, fire protection that we provide, that we try to provide citywide, but we would provide...
Just to the existing home now, not to the future development?
Right, right. It would be, it would be a limited fire protection, limited fire protection and emergency response service to the existing home until such time as the property is developed and proper infrastructure and access are put into place and fire hydrants, et cetera.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Then we will open the public hearing and ask anyone to come forward that would like to speak regarding this annexation petition and plan of services. No one on the annexation petition and plan of services? We will still continue this in case there are others that do want to speak on it and they may not have gotten notice. So we will be looking for a motion to continue to November 17th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item will be the companion zoning application for approximately 2.8 acres located along New Salem Highway to be zoned CH simultaneous with annexation and approximately 22.2 acres to be zoned RS8 simultaneous with annexation. Salem Properties, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. As indicated, the portion that's along the west property line that fronts along New Salem is requested to be rezoned or to zone to CH, which is our highway commercial. The property next door, just south of this piece of land, is developed with a Dollar General, so it is similar to what's happening in the neighborhood with commercial development along that side. The residential portion is bulk zoning. They are asking for RS8. There is a variety of housing or residential-sized lots out in that area. It's, as you can see on the map, there is a county subdivision to the south... It's, as you can see on the map, there is, um, a county subdivision to the south, which are probably primarily, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand square foot lot sizes. RS ten is to the west and is under construction for single-family homes. Uh, RS six is to the east, and RS fifteen is to the north, as well as a more CH that's undeveloped along the highway. Um, RS eight zoning does permit single-family homes on at least eight thousand square foot lots. This particular subdivision, uh, just due to the configuration, would still have a lot of open green spaces, and so the density is not equate exactly to the RS eight, but more in line with the three dwelling units, uh, to the acre, something that would be more in line with what our sewer allocation ordinance is, um, so there would be a lot of open green spaces in this subdivision. The future land use map and the comprehensive Murfreesboro Plan 2035 does indicate that suburban residential is the most appropriate, uh, land use category, and the characteristics in the suburban residential are the lower-density lots, um, with more open space areas within each individual lot. Within this suburban residential, it does allow clustering, and as long as you provide additional open space within the subdivision itself, which is what the developer's intending to do, so he's asking for the smaller lots, but then there would be greater green spaces provided. So the commercial portion, though, is inconsistent, however, staff feels that, um, although it's inconsistent with the 2035 future plan, it is compatible and, um, would fit in with the neighborhood of what's happening along this portion of New Salem Highway. For those reasons, as well as, um, um, that the zoning district for eight thousand square feet, our zoning ordinance does require, um, those be masonry materials, brick, stone, cementitious siding, so no longer, um, allows for vinyl houses on at least seventy-five percent of the house materials itself for each elevation, so with the revisions to our recent zoning ordinance changes, it doubt, it does require those higher level of building materials with this bulk zoning. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, the developer's representative is here, and, uh, look forward to hearing any questions and responding to those after the public comment period.
Okay. And just wanna, I think you mentioned it, but I just wanna confirm that everyone, uh, what we're looking at on the, on the screen does say RS six simultaneous with annexation, and just to confirm, we are looking at a request for RS eight, and it just didn't get changed on the, the actual map, so-
That's correct, he's officially changed his request to RS eight.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments before we open this public hearing? All right, we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this zoning application.
My name is Brian Klein. I live at one-one-seven Clear Ridge Drive, which is butted up right to this piece of property. I have no objection for the city to annex this property, but I do have concerns about security. There is a waterway that goes through here, it's, it's sort of like a reservoir, and water runs through there into a swampy area right in the middle of this property. I don't know what they had planned for that, but on the other side of ninety-nine, there's another property going in, and they have created a huge hole in the ground as big pond, and they are funneling water through that, into that pond for our protection. Now, we have a neighbor who insists on blocking that water, but he has been unsuccessful so far. He lives right across the street from me. I don't mind what he's doing, but I got a feeling there's gonna be a problem in the future, because he's slowing the water down that comes out of his property, goes under Clear Ridge Drive, then down underneath ninety-nine into this reservoir. There's also, like I said, about three doors down, a waterway where there's a lot of weight, rain comes in there, that flows right into this swampy area. I don't know what they have planned for that, but I don't want them to block us up to where we don't have a chance to keep our property from being swamped. The, I've been there twenty years, maybe even a little more, and the first year I was in my, I'm on lot number one, right here, right, let's see, yeah, I'm lot, right, get my bearings here, I'm right here. Okay. The water backed up from ninety-nine to one foot to my security fence, and I said, "Man, I gotta do something about this." It's such a low spot. Well, over, over the years, Shane Fogel has bought this property right in here, and he has helped keep this water flowing. He's helped do that, and that protects my property, but what, that's just one concern. Another concern is privacy. We've been there, like I said, twenty years, not one thing has ever happened in our neighborhood, and here we're gonna have, up here, a big commercial area, big residential area, back here, another big residential area, and Clear Ridge Drive is gonna go right into it. That's already been planned. They're gonna bust through a fence, and that's gonna be all access. When they come off of here, it's gonna be all access here, right down Clear Ridge Drive, and what do you think that's gonna do to our traffic? It's gonna be a problem. It's already a problem. Over here, we got a brand-new high school, a middle school, and on the other side of ninety-nine, a grade school. Do you know what the traffic is like? I'm, I swear to you, it backs up all the way to Veterans Parkway, every morning, every morning, and I know eventually they're gonna run that highway, ninety-nine, all the way out to Veterans. It's gonna be big and wide and very nice, but it all narrows down right here. You've got a big housing project over here, a big housing project over here. When I moved out there twenty years ago, I might see six cars when I would come out of Clear Ridge Drive all the way to Murfreesboro. I gotta wait for twenty cars now to get out of Clear Ridge Drive. I guess what I'm trying to say is, unless they plan very carefully about this swampy area and build it in like it's supposed to be, and put in a reservoir like they did on the other side of ninety-nine, we're gonna have some water problems. And the previous owner of that property is Rick Womack, and Rick is sold to them. Now, on this map, you can see where he has a little drive in back here, all the way back to his property. He built a fence all along there, and it, it covers all the way down to the third house on that, on that, uh, right here. I know I'm making a mess of this, but (laugh) it goes clear down to here. I'm asking for another fence to be built all the way down this road, right, this path right here, that butts up to my neighbor's property, my other neighbor's property, and the next one, so that all these people can't come filtrating through our neighborhood. They're already gonna be driving through my neighborhood, but I don't want people crossing our property day in and day out, going to school, coming home, um, I know it's gonna be a mess, and there're not, nothing I can do about it, but I hope they make, uh, provisions for the water that's gonna go right into that area there where it's swampy, and I'd like to see them, somebody tell them to make a big reservoir like they did across the street, and it handles it, it handles it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else that would like to speak? Matt?
Matt Taylor from SCC, uh, representing the applicant, and, um, I'll be happy to meet with Mr. Klein one-on-one if he would like. Uh, we designed, I think he's referring to Carlton Landing on the west side of ninety-nine, we designed, we just, we designed that detention pond. We would have something similar here, I don't know if it's gonna hold water necessarily, um, or if we're just gonna try to pass it to the north and leave this dry, but, uh, it would function in the same sort of manner. Um, uh, his water, most of Mr. Klein's water actually flows back toward ninety-nine and Mr. Fogel's property that he mentioned, not necessarily toward us, but a lot of property from Clear Ridge does flow onto this property, and we will have to accept it, manage it, pass it through. Uh, we cannot block, block or dam that up, so we'll be, I'll be happy to meet with him individually, uh, at my office, or on site, whatever he wants to do, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Hey, Matt, he asked about a fence, I know we're not there, but it, it, I have a question, so existing fences that, that is there today, is that staying or not necessarily, or?
So, uh, if the fence is on the property line, which I believe is where he's referring to, then we traditionally leave those, because once they're on the property line, there's, you know, I think both parties have some expectation of whose fence that is, and so whenever I look at my survey, it appears that it's on the fence, so it would stay in place. I would anticipate that as homes get built, they would fence in their backyards as well, so.
Yep, I'm sorry, Mr. Klein, we can't take anymore.
They can build a fence.
All right, anyone else that would like to speak on this item? All right. If there's no one else, then I think we're looking, uh, any other questions or comments? I think we, Mr. Taylor addressed most of Mr. Klein's questions. We're looking for a motion to continue this public hearing on November seventeenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next and last public hearing tonight is a zoning application for approximately eighty-two-point-five acres located along Veals Road to be rezoned from RS six, RS ten, and RS twelve to PRD, the Greystone PRD, and approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-three acres located along Veals Road and Double Springs Road to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Meritage Homes is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. Uh, as you mentioned, uh, from the heading, this particular project, uh, is north of Veals Road to the west of Double Springs Road, and a portion of the property is, uh, filed for an annexation, which, uh, if the project moves forward, we hope to marry up with the council, uh, meeting, and it involves five properties, four of them here in blue outside city limits, and this, believe it or not, is actually one property that has three zone districts over it, and so the entirety of the acreage, the eighty-two-point-five acres in city limits, and the hundred-and-twenty-three acres outside, is all proposed to be zoned PRD for the Greystone project. Uh, around the property sites is predominantly residential, single-family, to the north and to the west of the property, as well as some RM twelve, and then county zoning is generally RM, and then there's a PRD, uh, in close proximity to the south side of the project. Uh, the proposed PRD would actually, um, in our general plan designation, it shows the area as suburban residential, as we mentioned in the staff report, not sure how the public institutional popped up into the middle of the property, um, but most of it is suburban residential, which would generally support, uh, densities in the neighborhood of two to three-point-five-four dwelling units per acre, and usually accommodate RS fifteen, RS twelve, and RS ten zoning districts are generally considered compatible districts. Uh, the particular property area, uh, through our major thoroughfare plan actually shows a connector street going north-south, which would go through the, uh, Farm, Farmhouse Downs project, all the way to John Bragg Highway, through their subdivision, uh, to Veals Road, and then the future plans would be connecting it back to Erby Road, um, at, uh, the area, and it would be a three-lane roadway. You may recall the last project, uh, application that you had when you set this public hearing did not show this as a three-laned roadway, it is now shown as a three-lane, uh, roadway with a sixty-foot cross-section and three lanes, as the subdivision to the north is actually laid out as that as well. Um, the project does include multiple phasing, uh, for the project, four phases. Uh, it shows that the southerly portion of that new connect, collector road would be constructed with phase one, and then the northerly portion with phase four, or whenever the subdivision to the north connects, so if it takes a quicker amount of time for the north subdivision to develop, they would be required to connect that street earlier than the four phases. Uh, they do include in the subdivision, uh, a schedule, and you'll see up here in the top left-hand corner of your packet, for four-hundred-and-three total units, one-hundred of them being townhomes, and three-hundred-and-three being single-family dwellings, a portion of those under regular lots, and a portion of those under a horizontal property regime. Just to show you a quick picture, 'cause a picture's worth a thousand word, uh, the townhomes are scheduled to lay out something similar to this, where they have one-car and two-car garages with either a four-car drive apron or a two-car drive apron in front of those areas, and all those streets are proposed to be private. Um, the hundred-and-fifty-nine homes through an HPR would lay out with all side-entry garages, that would again provide four cars parking outside and two within the parking area, and then the hundred-and-forty-four, uh, remaining homes that are on standard lots would have lot sizes around sixty-five-hundred square feet. All have two-car front-entry garages on individual lots, uh, for those, and all of the materials are proposed to be made out of cementous materials or stone. As far as landscaping's concerned, staff did ask, because of the rural nature of this area, a berm and landscape buffer along the Veals Road component, as well as a berm and a landscape B buffer along those houses that would back onto, uh, Double Springs Road, so they are actually double-fronted lots. So the front area would be a traditional drive-up, uh, side-entry garages here, but their back would be to Double Springs. And let me make sure I've covered everything, so staff has worked with the applicant, um, quite a bit since our last viewing. Uh, in looking at it, planning commission would need to determine whether the overall PRD layout and design, um, is appropriate for the general plan designation, given the fact that townhomes are proposed. We would normally see a lot more open space, and I did forget to mention that they do have a step system for their sewer treatment in this particular area, and then on page five and six are those staff comments that are outstanding. Uh, the applicant will be sharing with us some of the updated architecture that you have not seen in your, uh, packets as of yet, and we still would like to work with them on the Dallas and the Autumn, uh, house fronts, which we believe can be done as we work through the process, uh, especially as townhomes and the HPR lots would come back to us in the site plan review. Uh, and then just lastly, most of the comments, three through nine, are more related to traffic and roadways, but we wanted to make sure that those are incorporated into the subdivision, uh, and I believe that, uh, they are working towards incorporating all those items into their plan book. plan book. And with that, I would like to turn it on over to their representative to go over the more specific details of this 403 unit PRD.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied by Mr. Chris Cowan of Meritage Homes. And we do have a brief presentation on what we've termed Greystone PRD. So as Ms. Smith said, this is about a 205-acre piece of property at the intersection of Double Springs and Veals Road. Veals would be the blue line running left-right on this drawing. Double Springs would be the white line running north-south. About a third of the property is in woods, and then really that is on the west and the east. And then between is row crop for the remainder of the property. About 40% of the property is already in the city limits. It's a mixture of RS6, RS10, RS12. The remaining 123 acres is in the county. I believe you all voted last month to recommend annexation to the city council for that remainder. The site has good access to most utilities. You've got electric along both Double Springs and Veals. You've got water along those same roads. Step system would be providing the sewer here. The developer would construct that and then dedicate that to Murfreesboro Water Resources, who would maintain and operate that for the remainder of the time. The property is also encumbered by a TVA easement, shown here on the western third of the property. The property generally drains from about the northeast corner of the property to the south and southwest, where it crosses under Veals, and eventually goes on to Black Fox Springs and Todd's Lake to the west and north. This is the existing house on site. This will be demolished. Some of the row crops on the property, you see some of the woods in the background there, the TVA towers, as well as more row crop. This is looking along Veals toward Bradable, and so the property would be to the right in this picture. This is at the end of Medford Campbell Drive, up in the northwestern corner of the property. Looking into that subdivision, our project would be kind of to the back of this picture. This is an existing house on the other side of Double Springs Road to the east of our property. Project itself, we have proposed as a PRD or a planned residential district zoning to allow for 403 single-family homes. Those are a mix of detached and attached, with about 25% of those being townhomes. That still leaves a relatively overall low density of just under two units to the acre. That is spread across a 30-foot house, a 40-foot home, and then the attached townhomes that I mentioned previously. The 30-foot homes and the townhomes would all be conveyed through a horizontal property regime or an HPR. Everybody in the development, regardless of how the property is conveyed, will be a member of the HOA. That HOA would be managed by a third-party association. Of course, all of our utilities here will be underground, like I think all of our developments are anymore. One of the things that drove the layout of this property are the existing wetlands. There's a significant amount of wetlands on the west, as well as the east side. There's also an existing cemetery on the east side. And so those features and our preservation of those drove the design and the layout. It really resulted in, one of my favorite design elements is, a lot of these, most of these homes will back up to permanent open space, whether that's a step system field or common space or stormwater. We find that that's very attractive to our future homeowners. And then all of our streets for the single-family detached will be public streets with sidewalks on both sides. The townhomes will be private streets that will be maintained by the HOA. Those will also have sidewalks along both sides. The 30-foot wide homes are located on the eastern side. As Ms. Smith said, there's 159 of those proposed. There will be a variety of one- and two-story homes. They'll start at 1,400 square feet in size and go up to 2,500. These will be conveyed through a horizontal property regime. These will be all side-entry garages. And then setbacks are very standard for our developments today, 35-foot front and then a 10-foot separation between buildings, because it's an HPR, and then 20-foot on the rear. And then good-quality building materials, no vinyl except for the trim and soffit areas, so all brick, stone, and cement board siding here. Then here's a sample of some of the architecture. We've worked extensively with staff to modify these. These started out as front-entry, and the applicant was willing to convert those to side-entry, start dressing up and add more detail to the front, try to make the porch more prominent, the windows more important. And each of these, you'll see, there's four to eight varieties of each home. We do not want a monotonous look. We don't want the same house. It may be the same footprint, but we want to be able to construct what appears to be a different house from the outside, even though the floor plan would be the same. The 40-foot homes are on the western side of the property. There are 144 of those proposed. Again, they're a mixture of one- and two-story homes. They'll have the same square footage range. These will be on individual lots of record. These will all be front-entry garages. And then the setbacks here are pretty much the same. We have asked to do a 25-foot front setback. However, we would keep the garage back at 35 feet to allow for that parking and the same quality of materials in this section as well. So another sample of homes. Again, worked with staff, added extra post on porches to try to create some balance, added some more decorative garage doors, more variety of materials. And then the townhomes are located in the central part of the neighborhood. There's about 100 of those. We've got one pocket on the west that's about 30. The other pocket is about 70. We have very purposefully located these on the internal part of the property, so they're not against a adjoining road or an adjoining neighbor. We've planned for these to be developed in four- and six-unit buildings spread throughout. We have also planned for an abundance of parking in each unit, plus visitor spaces in each of those pockets. So we've got a good diversity and dispersment of those parking spaces. Again, these will all be two stories. They'll start at 1,200 square feet. They will be the HPR, all front-entry garages. And then the setbacks are very typical for what you see, 35-foot. So you've got those two cars parking back-to-back in the driveway, 10-foot separation between buildings, and this 20 on the rear. And the same materials will carry over here as well. The architecture, again, we've worked collaboratively with staff, come up with a better product. We widened the porches and wrapped those here. We went in and modified the roof lines extensively, have given multiple options on the roof lines. We are alternating materials and colors between units. And again, we don't want the same, even though they may be the same footprint, we don't want the same-looking building directly beside of each other or across the street from each other. And that's the reason for all the different options here. The amenities, we've tried to spread those throughout. Our main structured amenity would be along the new Collector Road that Ms. Smith talked about. The biggest structured amenity there would be a pool and a pool house, as well as a dog park, as you all know. Those are very popular today, almost a necessity to build. We've also got a playground planned at this location, our mail kiosk, I would anticipate to be here. So we think this will be a very active, a very busy location. And so we've tried to plan for an abundance of parking at this location to allow for that busyness. And then really spread throughout the neighborhood, we've planned for these open playfields that are not necessarily structured, but it's someplace that a kid can go play wiffleball or flag football with his buddies or her buddies, or just go have a picnic. So I think those are very important. I think it's worth saying that, you know, this site is dedicating over 50% of permanent open space between what will be stepfield, as well as common area that the HOA will own and maintain. So it's about 110 acres that will be permanently green inside of this plan. As Ms. Smith said, we've planned for extensive landscape buffering and berming throughout. There's about three or four different types, because they serve different purposes. The separation between the townhomes and the single-family detached will have your typical type-C buffer, straight out of the zoning ordinance. The properties and homes along Double Springs will be buffered from the roadway by a type-B landscape buffer, along with a berm. That type-B landscape buffer is shown in the typical, shown in the lower right-hand corner. Of course, that's got a little bit of growth on it, but that shows the effectiveness. Along Veals Road, the typical there is going to be very decorative with a type-A landscape buffer. That is shown in the upper right-hand corner here. Again, that is to help screen the back of homes, which are further off the road. That's also got some stormwater, and really just to create an aesthetic opinion or an aesthetic feel, as Ms. Smith said. And then along the Collector Road, as you come in, we've planned for decorative landscaping there. We obviously want the entry to our neighborhood to be appealing, and that would be where we would achieve that. Access points, we've planned for four access points to existing roadways. And so two of those will come off of Veals on the south side here, one of those off Double Springs on the northeast side, and then one of those on to Medford Campbell Boulevard. We have also planned for two connections in the future to Farmhouse Downs, whenever those are built, whether it's us there first or them. And so this community, as well as the ones around, will have good dispersment of traffic, good flow. And then we will also be constructing this Collector Road on the west side of the property that will help complete a leg of the city's major thoroughfare plan. And then our traffic study indicated that there are turn lanes needed at the intersection of Bradable and Veals to the west of this site, so about where this arrow is pointing, we'll be constructing those turn lanes with this project as well. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing in a couple of weeks.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Lot of information there.
Yeah, I have a couple clarifications, Matt.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
You're on a roll tonight, Matt. Leaving women out all over the place. To confirm, in the townhomes, it looks like all driveways will fit two cars bumper-to-bumper, whether it's single-car or two-car garage.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then street parking?
We have visitor parking. We have, in the smaller pocket, the 30 one, I'll bring that back up. So right here, we've got two pockets of visitor spaces in this, if they can put, yeah, they've got that back up on the screen. So we've got two pockets there. And then in the larger, we've got visitor parking in the center of the project there as well. And then the streets would be a normal width for city, city street, I think, 22 or 24-foot of pavement, then your sidewalk, and then your driveways.
So it's 30 homes and then 70 homes?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many visitor parking spots on the bigger section?
I don't have that called out. I would say there is roughly, just looking at that, 20 to 25 in there. I can tell you that each section, we parked both sections per the city zoning ordinance. And so both sections meet or exceed the city zoning ordinance for the number of parking spaces.
You know I like parking more than that.
I can get that number for you before we're back in two weeks.
I just zoomed in, and it's 25 spaces on the dot.
How about that?
In the 70-unit section.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Taylor?
Yes, but I lost it. I'll ask you in two weeks, because I have a lot of papers here.
Well, we still have to, I believe, open the public hearing.
Okay.
So you'll still have a chance.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak And seeing no one, we'll ask for, unless you want to have more questions or anything, we'll ask for a motion to continue this public hearing on November 17th.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our staff reports and other business. Three items there tonight. We have all three mandatory referrals. The first is a mandatory referral for the purchase of properties along Butler Drive. The city of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Ives?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this first application, you see from the attachment that the city purchased approximately 20 acres to the south of these properties here recently, with the expectation that we will be establishing some public works facilities, both for street department and possibly for solid waste department. The four, we expect that we will not be particularly good neighbors.
Mr. Ives, I'm going to go ahead and ask the cable department if they could put up the map that's on my computer.
Okay. Thank you. So again, the property, the somewhat triangular property to the south, the city has purchased a few months ago. When we locate some solid waste and street department facilities on this property, we think we probably won't be real good neighbors to the properties to the north. There's four separate parcels. The three of them have homes on them, and one at the back is vacant. We have been in some discussions with those folks, and it appears we'll be able to do a consensual transactions. We would ask your approval for acquiring these transactions, or acquiring these four properties, and it would, along with eliminating the problem of us not being good neighbors to residents, it would allow for some expansion of an additional public works facilities on this property. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ives? If not, we're just looking for a motion, correct?
Yes.
Make a motion we approve, subject to any staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Second mandatory referral for the purchase of property along South Church Street. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Ives?
These, this is one of the three properties that are south of the entrance into City Hall, parking garage, the entrance off of South Church Street. This is one of three that we, the city does not already own. We have been in negotiations with this owner and believe we will have a consensual transaction. Would like your approval to purchase this. The properties that the city already owns, the former police department offices and some park and recreation warehouses, warehousing kind of facilities, those have all, are all well past their useful life. We will probably be looking at a scrape and replace, and perhaps some future development of some kind. And the other thing that triggers this one currently, we are now in the planning stages to add a dedicated right-turn lane on South Church from the entrance into the City Hall parking garage down to Broad. That way we would have two, we would continue to have our left-turn lane. We would have two through lanes going on across Broad, and then a dedicated right-turn lane to turn right onto Broad. When we do that, we will eliminate all of the parking that this particular project has. Obviously, there's city hall garage parking for it, but we will be eliminating the parking that currently is available to this property. And we would like your approval to go ahead and purchase this property and then be able to, at some point, demolish it when we demolish the rest of the currently city-owned properties.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ives? Any questions for Mr. Ives? Not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we have a mandatory referral for the purchase of properties at twelve oh four and through twelve eighteen West Main Street. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Ives.
These properties are at the intersection of West Main Street and Bridge Avenue. There are currently three or four rental cabins on this property. This is a flood-prone property. When we have significant rain events, there is frequently flooding on this property. We had looked in the past at the possibility of some FEMA grants to acquire this property. However, we believe that, you know, the somewhat of a rule of thumb that was adopted by Dana Richardson was that if you're not doing at least a million dollars for a grant, it's not worth the time and effort and trouble it takes to get it. And personally, I think that number should be raised, having been involved with some, not necessarily FEMA, but TDOT grant and other federal grant money. But regardless of that, we are not, at this point, seeking a FEMA grant, but we would like to eliminate the flood problems here. And if we acquire this, then we would probably, it would be a combination of stormwater protection, stormwater management, and perhaps some recreational facilities. We would expect to use some park and rec funds for the purchase and some stormwater funds, and that it probably eventually would be managed by Park and Rec Department for, with the possibility of some river access from this property. So if we can arrange it, we would like your approval to go ahead and acquire this, eliminate a flood problem, a danger problem for when we have a flood over there and then our fire rescue people have to go and try to help people, and it's a problem that we would like to eliminate.
Any questions for Mr. Ives regarding this mandatory referral?
Not, I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have for the city.
No further business? Is there anybody else that has any further business for tonight? Because if not, it looks like we stand a drum. Thank you all.